In session and we will turn it over to Suzanne.
Thank you. Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember LeVar.
Here.
Councilmember Sonier.
Here.
And I know that Councilmember Sawyer is absent.
Thank you. Okay, if you all will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will start with ceremonies, presentations, and appointments and start with our farewell to our city attorney of the last 16 years, Erin Smith. Gosh, I'm not sure where to start. This is always emotional for me. I'll say this to start though. Over five years ago, myself, I sat here for the first time, never sitting anywhere to my right, never sitting anywhere to my left, very seldom being in this community in terms of city council at all. And so I was honored, I was privileged, I was thrilled to have Erin sitting next to me. And at that time, I had Carol on the other side, who really brought me up to speed on everything. And so, I can't thank you enough. And it goes, for me, it's, it goes way more than just, right, being a great mentor for me. On the city side, 16 years, if you can imagine, gone through a lot, tons of growth, and all under the leadership of Erin Smith. And so, you know, we're sad, we're happy for Erin to move on. She's been a tremendous resource for our community. And again, that number of 16 years, there are just not many of us that give that kind of service to a community. So Erin, thank you very much. We have a couple of things for you. I know you like gifts. So we're going to give you a couple of gifts. This is a beautiful bouquet. Is that right?
That's very good.
And this, I'm not sure, are we going to have her open this now?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to have you open this now. So now, we're telling you what to do.
Mayor, do you want to tell Ms. Smith about where the gift's from and everything?
Sure. One of our local business people, a couple, Frank and Sue, help me with their last name, I'm sorry. Frank and Sue Gray, thank you, who live basically across the street from me. Anyway, they do tremendous artwork, pottery, and we thought you would like this. So you tell us if you like it or not.
Wow. Oh, my goodness. You've been a guest at their-
More than once.
... bed of breakfast, right Erin? Yes. That's, this is the bed of breakfast, yes.
Oh, my gosh, this is beautiful. This is, this is so beautiful. I, I-
Keeps coming. It gets bigger, I think.
We wanted something authentic from Woodland Park for you.
Wow, wow.
Beautiful.
They are.
They're pretty.
Yes, they-
Keep going.
There's one more.
Wow, now you could have a nice Italian dinner.
Yeah.
And in all these years, I'm never sure when I'm obligated, supposed to, doing the right thing and giving a mayor's spin. And you all know that, you know, I've given them to 10-year-olds, to 80-year-olds, and everywhere in between, and always for the same reason, right? For those people that have really gone above and beyond for our community. And so on behalf of everybody, certainly council, our whole community, our staff, we love you, we're going to miss you, and this is for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I was on the Board of Adjustments before I was on city council, and Erin, as everybody knows, up on the dais here, I have a lot of emails that go around, and she's always been helpful for all those 15 years or 14-
16.
Well, of the ones that I was working with her. And she was very helpful all the time, answering all my questions, and it's been a wonderful relationship for me to hopefully proceed, because she's come through this town quite often now with her other obligations, and she's committed to me that she will stop by from time to time. And I really do appreciate what you've done, especially for me and my various roles here.
Anyone else want to have any comments? Carol?
Oh, I wasn't sure if Sally was ready to jump in.
I just was going to say that I've had the privilege of working with Erin for all 16 years almost, except for the few in between, on staff and now on council, and you will be sorely missed. We've been through a lot together, and thank you for your service and everything you've done for our community. Thank you.
I think I have to go back to Chicken Man is when we first met. How many of you remember that? That was my first exposure to city government, and to watch her sit there, straight-faced, when we had like a human petting zoo come to the council chambers during that period of time. But what it led to, of course, was a new signage ordinance, and learned so much from Erin in that period of time. But probably Erin, when I realized the value of your mentorship and your knowledge, is during that very tumultuous time when we had a transition from one mayor to another. And you not only became a very important resource for me to understand the mechanics of that process, but also a very good friend. I missed you. Oh, she's the best-dressed attorney, patient, intelligent, and will be in. I've appreciated her time and help. And that's from-
She's a quiet one.
I could have done an interpretive dance.
Just like to wish you the best, and a happy life. Lots of joy.
Thank you, Paul.
Staff, anybody like to chime in?
Well, I remember very clearly when we hired Erin in 2005, or the council hired her, but we had just received the application for Walmart. So you can imagine, it was many, many hours of public hearings. In fact, we had several meetings that went late into the night, 1:00 a.m. in the morning, and there was over 24 hours of continuous hearings between the Planning Commission and the councils. So we really broke Erin in, right off the bat, with a very controversial case, and I learned so much from her. And it was then on to the sign code, and learning about protecting our First Amendment rights, and developing a code that was going to be easy to administer, consistent, and fair to our businesses and our community. She has also assisted Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, so to ensure that the due process for quasi-judicial hearings is intact and protected, and our volunteers are well-trained and understand their roles as far as those QJ cases, whether it was an annexation, a rezoning, a subdivision, or an amendment to the code. We always relied on Erin to be able to help us with those very challenging cases and important aspects to moving our community forward. So I'm so grateful to have known Erin since 2005, and we're really going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Erin, I have some remarks. I have them written, so I don't get too emotional. I'm like, you know, I'm just like the mayor when it comes to emotions. But I'd like to say that I've worked for the city of Woodland Park, as you know, for 15 years. My first seven years were spent at the police department. Eight years ago, I moved over to the city clerk's office, and that's when I first met Erin Smith. From the first day I met Erin, I knew she was someone special. I have counted on Erin's guidance and wisdom over the years. One of the best things Erin would help me with was walking through a situation. She would always say to me, "Okay Suzanne, if you want to do this, be prepared for this, or be prepared for the possibility of this happening." She was always there to guide me to make the best decision that I could make for the city of Woodland Park. From election questions, to personnel issues, to core requests, and on and on, her guidance and wisdom were always appreciated. I especially enjoyed her open ears and her open mind. After a few years of getting to know Erin, I now consider her a friend. She is one of the most caring and kind individuals I know. Erin is also a very godly woman, and emulates this in all that she does. Erin has been a mentor to me, a counselor, and a sounding board. I appreciate her love for our beautiful city, and will miss working with her. Erin, best of luck to you on future endeavors.
Don't pink.
And I look forward to continuing our friendship. And thank you for everything, and God's peace and blessings to you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
I'm glad you wrote that down.
It was beautiful. Thank you.
Anybody else in our audience? Anyone else over the dais?
I've only been here a short six months, but I will tell you that I've had some tough decisions that I've had to deliberate on, that have had some legal implications during that time. And Erin's been the person I've called, and I will tell you, I've got some really solid advice, and she's helped mentor me in the first six months, and I really appreciate it. And I'll tell you, the character that you've demonstrated in terms of how your support and your graciousness during the transition, and being able to reach out and help Jason in the transition, it just demonstrates the character that you have, and I can't be more appreciative of what you've done for me in just the short six months since I've been here. So I just want to thank you. And the staff has signed a card for you, and put comments that, because every one of them have had great experiences with you, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you so much. And I'll save this for later, and I'll treasure it.
Yes, the floor is yours.
I have a few words. Mayor Levy and members of this council, thank you so much for letting me represent you as city attorney for all of these years. When I started, my hair wasn't gray. And those many years are a lot of years in city attorney years. So I am just so pleased to have been able to, been part of this community, and been a part of some pretty daunting challenges that we have worked through together. Thank you to this council. Thank you to your successors, who sat in these seats and had that vote of confidence in me. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank that first council who hired me those many years ago, in face, in the face of a pretty challenging situation, and that was in front of the city. And so I am going to say thank you, Mayor Gary Crane, Phil Mella, Jeff Baldwin, George Parker, Steve Randolph, Terry Harrison, and John DeVoe. And a special thank you to John DeVoe, because about two weeks after I started as city attorney, he brought me a footstool. With Alpine, with his business insinuating on it, and it has been under this dais the whole time. So I am so, I have so much gratitude to the councils and to the leadership that you've shown, and for, again, that vote of confidence. And it has been, I must say, an immense pleasure, an immense privilege, and an immense honor to work with the city staff of Woodland Park. This city staff stands on the shoulders of some giants, and it was an honor to work with them. But I have to say that I have been so fortunate to work with the people in this room who are the city managers, the directors of the departments and the city manager. They embody what is absolutely best about municipal government, and that is the highest level of professionalism and knowledge in their areas. They are experts in their areas of expertise. And, you know, I say that with having been, had the opportunity to work in this field for 30 years. So they just really are unmatched in their professionalism and their knowledge, and just the really, really good people that they are. And they have taught me so much. So thank you for all that you've taught me about municipal government. As the city is moving toward this next chapter, deciding to bring your city attorney in-house, I, you know, I respect that decision, and I am rooting for that to work out very well for the city. I think you have a great start. You made a very superb choice in hiring Jason Myers. And so I think that you will just move forward. My wish for this community, this council, and this city staff is that you will just continue to be successful in all you do, and I am just filled with so much gratitude to have been a small part of this for these last several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay, we'll move on, and before we move to item 3B, Darren has an announcement to make.
So as we always do, when we get a new fellow, a new Veterans Fellow, I like to introduce him to the community and the city, council and staff. He's already working with the staff, so it's not so much. But I wanted to bring up Spencer, or Sean Blodgett, and I'll have him kind of talk about his background and what he's been already doing with the city. I will tell you, I'm extremely impressed with Sean. Sean, he just stepped right in and just started knocking it out of the park immediately. And I think he's earned the trust and respect of the staff pretty quickly. And I'll let him talk about what he's doing already for the city, so that you kind of understand the scope and impact that he's having already in the short, you know, 30 days or so that he's been with us.
So as Darren said, my name's Sean Blodgett. I will soon to be a retired Marine after 31 years of active enlisted officer reserves service, predominantly been an infantry officer, but also as an intelligence officer and a foreign military advisor. I'm incredibly happy to be a part of the Veterans Management Fellowship, Veterans Local Government Management Fellowship, because I've spent at least 10 years of my life, in my professional life, working overseas, and working with other governments, in many cases with the militaries of other countries. And I'm very happy to be here and learning local government from the ground here, the ground level. Currently, I'm working with, working for Chief DeYoung on special projects over at the police department. I'm also working with a UCCS School of Public Administration class in their MPA program on a resiliency plan for Woodland Park, and then also looking at, well, I'm also bothering your department heads incessantly to learn all things about local government. So I appreciate everyone's patience with me as I'm learning local government, again, from the ground up, as a retiring Marine that has really done nothing as far as, since I'm 19-years-old, other than traveling around the world and doing things with the Marine Corps. This is a fascinating and incredibly rewarding experience, so I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, Sean, real quick, thanks for your service first and foremost, and I thank you and Darren at the same time. This fellowship program, Veterans Fellowship Program, that Darren has brought to our community is amazing. We've run into nothing but solid, classy, hard-working individuals that have helped make us better, and that's what we're all about. And so, we can't thank you enough, and you know we're all here for you if you ever need anything, but I know you already have a great working relationship with staff, and look forward to working with you in the future. So thank you very, very much. You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on and introduce Mike Skinner.
I just wanted to-
Oh, I'm sorry, Ben.
Oh, no problem. I'm Ben Schmidt, the city engineer, and I am pleased to present to council our-
It's a quiet crowd, they can hear you.
All right, I think that's better. So I'm Ben Schmidt, I'm the city engineer, and I'm pleased to present our 2019 pavement management plan, which is basically a path forward for the next 10 years on how we're going to manage our road network system. So just a quick overview, the city of Woodland Park currently sits at a PQI of about 56 for our entire network, and the PQI is basically a measurement, the metric that we use to identify problem areas within our road network, and a plan to move forward based on where those roads fall within that range. It's a score out of 100, and the state average is about a 70. So our plan for the next two years is to spend roughly an average of $1 million a year to bring our PQI back up to 70 for the entire municipality. And so with that, I would like to introduce Mike Skinner, who's a professional engineer, and he is the director of pavement engineering for the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. City of Woodland Park is a member of Kappa, and we're really looking forward to introducing Mike and his expertise. He has a really good perspective, not just locally, but throughout the entire state, and so he is here to present our, the technical data behind our pavement management plan.
Thank you, Ben. I'll be respectful of your time and keep my time limited.
Excuse me, Mike, before you start, is that microphone on? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, thank you for the invitation. Is that working?
I think so.
Okay. So as Ben mentioned, I am the director of engineering, I'm the technical director for the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. We don't sell anything, we don't provide any engineering services. We are a trade association that promotes best practices for your street improvement program across the state of Colorado. So I'm not here to sell you anything, I'm here to give you kudos on what you're doing to manage your street improvement program and how, what your plan is to move forward. Part of our membership, we have a membership triangle at Kappa, it's three-pronged. Part of that membership are the folks who produce asphalt in around the state of Colorado. Part of that membership triangle is everybody else who's involved in the industry, but they don't make their own material. And then the third piece of that triangle are you, local agencies. We have 78 local agencies that are members of Kappa across the state of Colorado, so Berango and Cortez, Trinidad, Mahunta, Laramo County, and so on and so forth, all four corners of the state. So I visit with, and my key role at Kappa is to provide technical assistance for local agencies, whether it be pavement management program, or forensics of a roadway that's not performing very well. I get calls from city engineers all the time, "Can you come out to Cortez and look at something? We're having a problem." Anyway, that's who I am, and that's what I bring to you. My background is 25-plus years, I'm a pavement guy. I live in the technical weeds of asphalt pavement. Case in point, my wife would probably be a little bit, would roll her eyes if I shared this story with you, but four months ago, we took a trip and we went to Polynesia, and we went to the island of Rorotonga, which is about 500 miles from Tahiti. A very small island, it's about 5,000 miles in the Pacific, the island itself is 5 miles by 7 miles. And when we landed there, the economic driver for the island is black pearls. They farm black pearls and they sell them. And so while we were there, we went to a strategically located black pearl store that happened to be across the street from the Public Works Department. And while we were there, I said, "Ann, why don't you go in the store and shop for pearls?" And I went across the street and visited with the Public Works Director while I was there, and I said, "I can't help it." But anyway, that's who I am. But what I wanted to share with you, Ben shared with me your current pavement management program, and again, I have to give you kudos for moving forward, because with all the agencies that I visit with across the state, you'd be surprised how many agencies don't have a pavement management program or a plan to keep their street improvement program moving forward. Part of what I do at Kappa is we generate an annual survey, and if you would pass out those green documents to your councilmembers. We collect this data on an annual basis, and I ask cities and counties from across the state to send me a one-page survey, "How much money are you spending on your asphalt program this year, and what's the condition of your network?" And that's summarized inside the document here. And so we have 79 agencies that responded this year. This is what the 79 agencies 2019 program looks like. Woodland Park is on there, you'll notice it's alphabetically down at the bottom. And so we're tracking what you're going to be spending on your program this year, and the genesis for this came from the city of Northland, which is a Denver suburb, and they said, "We don't want our residents to know when they transition across this mythical boundary from Northland into Thornton. We don't want our streets to be any better than Northland or Thornton, and we don't want our streets to be any worse." And the only way we can track that is to know where these agencies fall. So that was kind of the genesis, and if you look through the data, the colored spots on there, that's the pavement condition index, or a PCI score, that's scored on 0 to 100. And so the agencies that are in the green, you can see they're scoring very well, the agencies that are in the red are not scoring so well. Interesting story on there, if you take a look at the city of Canyon City, Adam Lancaster, who's the city engineer over there in Canyon City, Royal Gorge area, he shared this information with me, said, "Here's what our budget looks like, here's what our PCI score." Their PCI score in Canyon City is 35. To put it on a scale, and out of this scale of 0 to 100, the one number you need to remember that's important is the number 55. Anything above a 55 is considered good, anything below 55 is in a poor category. So when you look at Canyon City at a 35, they're having trouble, and Adam said, "Mike, I'm happy to share the information with you, but please don't publish it. We don't want people to know how, what the condition of our roads are like in Canyon City." And I had a long discussion with Erin, and I said, you know, "Let the roads speak for themselves in the condition, because you can turn that negative into a positive to move forward." And they were successful in passing a ballot initiative there two years ago, and implemented a sales tax specifically for their street improvement program. And I understand that you have a sales tax in place here, but it is interesting to see where Woodland Park falls on that category of a 56. The statewide average right now in Colorado is 70. So that's an obtainable number in the state, and you can see that Woodland Park is below average, and you can go in and you can look at El Paso County, I don't think Teller County responded this year, but you can look at El Paso County, Manitou Springs, Colorado Springs, Pueblo, Canyon City, some of the other municipalities in this area to see where they fall. So this is a great tool to, as an independent resource, to show where are you right now, and what's obtainable. To get there, to get to a target of 70, and so some agencies have a target goal of where we want our street network to be, that some agencies, the council sets that target level, some agencies' public works directors set that, some of them, city engineers set that level. Everybody does that a little bit differently. But let's take two steps back and talk about your specific asset here. That is one of your largest assets that you have to the city right now, your streets program. I did a quick little back-of-the-napkin calculation while I was sitting over here a minute, just trying to get a ballpark figure of what you've already- trying to get a ballpark figure of what you've already spent over the last several decades on your asset value of your street network. It's just under $90 million. I'm calculating it at about $88 million for your existing asset value that you're charged to maintain. Now, under, a long-term underfunding your street improvement program is the equivalent of taking equity out of that asset. And over a continued length of time, removing that equity, at some point, you will be responsible to have to recharge that equity, put that equity back into that asset. What does that mean? How do you recharge that equity? It's a very costly reconstruction of your network. So what do I share with our local agency folks? It's a very easy mantra, "Keep the good roads good." It's that simple. Keep the good roads good. And we'll say, "Well, okay." That's what I share with Ben, "Keep the good roads good." Because it's easier to maintain the roads that are in decent shape than allow them to slip into reactive-type spending. Reactive spending is very expensive, and it creates a very big backlog of roads that you have for your network. Speaking of backlog, that's this black hole of need that the city has, streets that are in poor condition, that you have to elevate them and get them out. Backlog number, general rule of thumb is, a local agency doesn't ever want to have more than 20% of backlog in their inventory. Right now, the backlog in Woodland Park is 48%. So, that's not good news. That's a very deep hole, that's a very difficult hole to dig out of. But it's, in order to move your program forward and recognize that, you do have to have an accurate assessment of what your inventory is. You can't just ignore that. So backlog, rule of thumb, 20%. General rule of, for comparison, La Plata County, which is Durango, I just looked at their pavement management program three, four days ago, their backlog's at 12%. So there are agencies that can track that. That's not tracked in the green document here, but it does put it in perspective where you are in Woodland Park, and there's a big hole to dig out of there. How do you do that moving forward? It's a programmatic, systematic, program-level, network-level decision to move forward, keeping the good roads good. You say, "Well, that's simple, we understand that." It's not. What I, when I say "keeping the good roads good," that means Ben developing a program to, now I'm not telling you to spend more money, I'm telling you to spend your money differently. Spend your money on roads that, when your citizens look at it, say, "Why are we spending money on this? We just crack sealed this, we just slurry sealed this, we just chip sealed this two years ago. Why are we spending money on that when we've got a road over here?" I said this 48% backlog, black hole of roads you have over here, why aren't we addressing this 48%? Because if we put our budget in this 48% over here, we're never going to dig out of it. We can't put enough money into that to dig out of it. So as a community, and as your city engineer, how do you develop a program to dig out of that hole? 48% is a big hole. It's going to take a long time to dig out of that hole. But to do that successfully, you keep the good roads good. So, in the STAN-TAC report, the GIS map that they included, that does have a portion of your network that's green, those are your streets that are good, you keep the good roads good. Continue to fund those, and you let the bad stuff slide. We can't do that. We're, you know, as an, as an agency, we have to maintain serviceability to the network. If you do that, that's called a worst-first spending program, you're only addressing the stuff that's in bad, bad condition, you'll never get out of that 48% hole. So you keep the good roads good, you spend more money on the stuff that's already good, and you slowly dig yourself out of that hole, preventing the stuff that's already in decent or salvageable condition to falling off that, off that curve. With that, I think I'm at 10 minutes, so I'd be happy to answer any questions from mayor or council or staff.
Counsel? Kip, comments, Ben?
Yeah, so the best part about this program that STAN-TAC put together, I mean, speaking to a council who has a lot of technical expertise and a myriad of different skillsets, you guys understand the importance of having really good data. And so, the best thing that I can say is that after collecting this 2018 data, this is the best data this, the city of Woodland Park has had in its entire history, most up-to-date, most accurate. It gave us a full picture of what the roads look like, from rideability to the number of cracks, to how deep they were, to the structural integrity beyond the roads. And this method that STAN-TAC put together for us gave us a much better picture than that typical PCI metric that you was referencing before, when you were comparing PQI versus PCI. So the nice thing is, is it broke every single road in the entire network up into segments, and then we were able to make systematic decisions to hit the roads, keeping the good roads good, like Mike was saying, and then coming up with a plan to repairing some of the bad roads, and bringing that whole network average up within 10 years, and doing it intelligently, year by year, with maps and estimated costs for how we're going to do that. So, I thought it was an excellent document that was put together, and there's some little things that we can work through to save costs in the long term. We're talking about doing some maybe three-year bids for contracts, so that they get a rolling bid, and we can get some better prices for that. We've talked about doing more stuff, you know, making sure that our, like, internal crack sealing program is, is doing what it's supposed to, and maybe doing that more frequently than we have before. So we're trying to save some costs there. But it's an excellent report, and it's 196 pages, so that's why I didn't print out the report individually to hand out to you guys to try to read through right now. But I'm happy to, to run through any of the maps or the methodology, or any of that with you guys individually.
Ben, thanks. Go ahead, Val.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, for those dated wegs in the audience and around, will those be, not down to the minutia level, but high-level documents, will they be available for the public? Or the council, or anybody?
Yeah, all of our, all of our plans are available to anyone at any time. So you're more than welcome to come up, we can go through it all with you.
Sure.
Well, would it be appropriate to put the link on our webpage?
Yes, we can do that as well.
Make it easy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But my, my number one question is, how bad, when you talk about this 48% backlog, what, what does that mean? What type of condition would a road have to be in to be in that?
Those are the roads that are in the poor to failed category that require, they're below the 55 score.
Meaning, they'd have to be entirely resurfaced, or?
There's a spectrum there. I mean, the stuff that is below a 20 score, those are reconstruction candidates. And the things that are, the 20 to 50 category are candidates for in-place recycling, reconstructing them in place without pulling everything out, or major rehabilitations. All, all three or four of those categories are very expensive.
And how many linear miles are we talking about within the city limits that are in that category?
So centerline miles, which includes both lanes, there's about 56.
Out of 115?
Well, sorry, that's, that, those are, lane miles is 115.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Half of your network is in that category.
Holy moly.
25-plus miles are in that category. The one thing, when you were asking about a website, one thing I would recommend or suggest to you, the agencies that are very successful, take a look at the city of Greeley. City of Greeley is a STAN-TAC, they use STAN-TAC to do their service, that's, that's just a coincidence. But, city of Greeley has a very strong champion on staff, Pat Hill, he's their pavement management guru. And they have a very robust website. That's a separate page of their city website that has transparency for all their citizens, says this is what our annual paving program looks like, this is what our annual surface condition data looks like, and they have everything available for citizens to look at.
Ben, or go ahead, Kip.
I'd just like to add that the 410 Fund has paid off debt, and we're in a good position to fund the improvements to our, to our asset.
And I guess that's my question, what's the biggest obstacle? How did we get to 48%? And, and how can we get out of that? Is, are resources or monetary resources the big issue? Are human resources? Is it weather? What are, what are the reasons why we're at where we're at?
We've been paying off debt in that fund, so that's paid off. We do live in an extreme climate environment. I mean, the frost gets pretty thick some years, and that has an effect on the roads. And then every time you cut into a road, you know, whether it's a service line, or if it's another utility provider doing work in there, that's why we have the new right-of-way ordinance in place, for street cut permits, those type of things. And then with this plan, it's a 10-year plan, to get us back on track.
I would like to also add to that, that the big thing is data collection, and making sure that we're doing constant checks and updates, that the road, what we are moving forward with, with that year's road, whether it's reconstruction, or crack seal, or something, that we're accurately hitting those curves. So, the last STAN-TAC report we had was done in 2012, and now we're up to 2018, and the recommendation is that we collect this data every three years. So, there's an intelligent way to go about this, where we can break the city up into, say, five quadrants, and move through systematically, so we're not paying for, you know, one major report. Every 10 years, we can go through and make sure that we're hitting every single section every three years, so we're getting accurate data to apply to that, to those maps, and making sure that we're hitting our goals.
Mike, thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The impression that I would leave with you is, is kudos. There are several agencies that aren't doing this, or are really struggling with this. So the fact that you are moving forward with a pavement management plan is a successful way to address the problem.
Thank you. Next time you're here, our numbers are going to be a lot better.
Absolutely.
We'll move forward to the consent calendar, and we're going to discuss item number 5C, and then we're going to take all three of them together. And Val, you want to start that discussion?
So, the chief was going to make a presentation on the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program. If you could give us a few specifics, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir. To begin with, this will be the third year that we've applied for it. It was hung up for a couple of years. We applied for the 2017 Edward Byrne Grant and the 2018 Grant. We recently just received the check today for the 2017 Grant. We got $42,000 with the radios. So, a lot of our radio systems, the one I carry is almost half as old as I am, so it's serviceable, but that's about it. So fortunately, we're able to get eight new handheld radios for the officers, and we have three more vehicle radios, so our vehicles actually have radios in them. The 2018 Grant that we applied for was about $67,000 for tasers, since they're no longer making the ones that we carry, and no longer supporting them, as well as mobile laptops for our vehicles. The grant for 2019, I'm sorry, for 20, yes, the 2019 Grant that would be funded in 2020 is for the school resource officer that is currently doing the drug prevention specialist work, which is Tim Bradley. His position is funded partially through the Families and Communities Together Grant, which is also called House Bill 1451. That grant will no longer be funding his position after this year. The Edward Byrne Grant would fully fund his position with an additional $12,000 per year to be able to do additional work. Currently, he does a lot of truancy work, works with the Marijuana Tax Revenue Program, as well as teen court. He is a truancy officer for them, does a lot of probation work, also is a certified DARE officer, and teaches in our schools as well. So, he has been a great addition to the school program, and this would fully fund his position for 2020.
Chief, when do you anticipate the 2018 Grant will be funded?
It only took him two years to fund the 2017 Grant. Fortunately, they've kind of got their act together, so I'm hoping in the next couple of months, we'll be able to get that taken care of. But I'm just relieved to get the radios at this point.
So, it talks about funding a specialist, you're talking about the DARE specialist, or the SRO at this point?
Correct.
SRO, so I'm sorry. The, the concern we always have in, in council is future years. It sounds, you said there was a net negative of 12 grand, I assume the budget, city manager, et cetera, has accomplished that delta. But, so we're always worried about future years, and, could you review again, I know you, you said some things about future years under this thing. In other words, we get, we're funding a person who exists at this point, right? It's not a new hire sort of situation?
He is funded by grants currently.
Right.
Yes.
And you expect that to continue?
I do, and since I lose one to three officers per year, I'll be able to backfill that position if I don't get the grant in the future.
Thank you.
How many SROs do we have now?
We have one funded by the city, we have one that is split cost with the city and the school, and then this grant funded physician, so it's a total of three.
That's what I got. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Counsel? If I could have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Hillary, I need to read the consent calendar into the record.
Please.
Thank you. This evening on the consent calendar, we have the approval of the minutes of the January 17th city council meeting. We have the approval of the 2019 Statement of Expenditures, and that is for January. And then we also have, as Chief DeYoung just spoke of, the approval of the 2019 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program.
And we also have Suzanne, the minutes of the January 22nd special meeting.
Oh, thank you. I missed that one. January 22nd meeting minutes as well. Thank you, Councilmember Case.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And the second. Suzanne?
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Soignier?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Did Hillary weigh in?
She did, I heard it.
You didn't hear her?
We have to have a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
All right, we'll move on to item, agenda item number six, and public comment on the agenda. We'll start with Carol Trader. Mr. Trader, if you give us your name and address to start.
Name's Carol Trader, address is 425 Pembroke Lane. But first of all, I'm going to do an ambush. I'm a retarded Master Sergeant Infantry Recon, and I know I've got two vets here, and on Wednesday night, the first Wednesday of every month, at 7 o'clock is the BFW meeting. It would be horrible if town fathers and a new founding father don't come down and transfer, or at least join. I put you on the spot in front of everybody. I'm the quartermaster, so I'll know whether you make it or not. The other thing is, we had a meeting at the HOA the other night at the Library for Tamaraq Reserve. I brought up at the end of the meeting that it looks like the town is trying, if I embarrass somebody, or you think I'm insulting you, I'm not. I still look at things, I'm a retarded cop also. It looks like some things are being slid under the table to get certain things done for certain people. A little mobile home park going over by the golf course is not authorized yet, is what I can see online. But one is projected to go in there under the name of Little Homes. They're still mobile homes. What I'm asking for, and the people at Tamaraq and Sunnywood, is if we can have a planning meeting before anything is done, and then have a city council meeting. When it was brought up at the meeting, you do not know how many angry people there were. We would like the meeting, and we'll all come, get as many as I can, so it can be discussed. Because they're being called Little Homes. It's a mobile home, being brought on a chassis. You can go on your phone, look up Champion Homes, because that's where it's coming from. They're mobile homes, and they're going to be put on a foundation. You could put a trash can on a foundation, you can put a boat on a foundation. Doesn't make it a house. It's still mobile. If you sell that house, and it stays there fine, but if you want to leave and take it with you, you're going to tear the foundation apart and wheel it out. It's got a VIN number, a license plate number, it goes to the DMV, it's a mobile home park. And right now, from what I can find online, there's no more mobile home parks to be. And the one we do have, before we let him build another mobile home park, it should be cleaned, code enforcement officers should go down there and tag it. You've got empty mobile homes, no windows, no nothing, don't know who lives there, it's the first thing you see when you come into this city, and it should be cleaned up.
Mr. Trader, I'll just say this, this may not be the time, we appreciate it.
I'm asking for a planning meeting and a council meeting, but that's what it's about. I'm not trying to hide anything.
And, and nor are we. So you alluded to the fact that we are trying.
No.
I assure you that we're not trying. And we will have public comment, we will have public meetings like we always do in this regard. And we welcome you back.
I'll be back.
And everybody else.
Okay.
All righty?
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much for your time. Okay, I've got Deb Miller.
Good evening. Debbie Miller, 210 East Midland. That's where I spend most of my time. First of all, one minute, I want to say, Erin, it has been a pleasure over the last 14 years that I've been here. I got here after Walmart, and Councilmember Harvey, I was here for the Chicken Man.
[laughing]
And your guidance in helping the chamber members, the business owners, as we worked the situation out with the revised sign ordinance, thank you so much. Over the years that I've watched the different councils sit here in your council, that you've given to them has been wonderful. And one thing sticks out in my mind is Councilman Harrison would share with me that he's just about to say something, and he'd look over at you, and you'd look at him, and he didn't say that. He feels like you kept him out of jail several different times. So, it's been a pleasure to work with you, and we're going to miss you, but we wish you well as you move on. So, what I came up for tonight is to share with you, we've sent our press release out, our annual award winners have been announced. So, if you haven't heard, I wanted to share with you this evening who they are. But, one particular thing, a couple of things I wanted to note. First of all, it's the largest in my 14 years of being here nominations that we've ever received. And then, I also put in this year's press release, the nominations go out to judges outside of the region. I learned about eight or nine years ago, it's too political to judge here in town, so I send them out of town to be judged. And so, when the results come in, we announce the results. And I'm pleased tonight to stand before you and announce, one of your own has been selected as employee of the year. And Chief Miles DeYoung, we are so thrilled to have you as our employee of the year. You've done such a leadership job in this community in less than desirable situations at the end of last year. And I'm personally so proud of you. So, congratulations.
[applause]
We look forward to giving your award on March 15th. We've got a great award slate this year, and excited. And I also want to share, any time I've reached out to Chief DeYoung to help with anything, never thought I'd do an active shooter training, but we've done two of those. Didn't think we'd have to teach our retailers about theft, but that's an issue. And you brought in the experts, and we've done that. So, we've reached out to you on several occasions. We look forward to working with you, and congratulations.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Deb. Okay. I'm sorry, I think I'm pronouncing this right. Is it Deloreta?
Deloreta.
I know. I know I should know how to say it.
I know. That's fine.
But, you're going to tell us right now.
I'm going to tell you right now that my name is Doloreta Barber at 500 Wildflower Drive. And first of all, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you, Councilwoman LeBarre, for inviting me and your suggestion. And thank you to our city manager, who has already given his blessings to at least part of this project that I'm going to present this evening. Every year, my husband Bob and I and our son Royce do a different fundraiser for a worthy cause in our community. As we are all well aware, officers of law are under assault all over the nation right now. It is unfortunate that Teller County is not immune to this violence. And that is this year, our fundraiser is going to be to provide the sheriff's deputies with Shield 616 packages. They are, at the moment, short 10 of these packages, and our goal is to raise enough funds to provide and buy those for them. According to our Attorney General, the access, easy access to marijuana has become very difficult to handle inasmuch as that drug-related crime has gone up very high in our state. The distribution of meth is at an all-time high. Eleven deputies of Teller County were assaulted this year. That is big manpower that we cannot, or our department really finds it difficult to handle. I was mentioning this at a little meeting I had with people the other night, and this lady looked up at me, and she said, "But, none of them were killed by the grace of God." And it is my, in my book, I think an ounce of prevention is worth a ton of cure in a difficult situation like this. Shield 616 provides officers with extra protection that they need when they have to go into a difficult situation. I'm a little austere. I'm sorry. As I said, the prevention is better than the cure. It is unfortunate that Shield 616 do not come cheap. They cost approximately $2,000 per package. That depends on whether the responder is a fire responder, different, but standard package is approximately $2,000. And it is our, as I said, they need 10 more of these. And this is why we are actively and aggressively, which I am doing now, soliciting funds that we will be able to buy those 10 shields. Some of you, I remember, that several years ago, we did a yellow ribbon tree in the park to support our military. That was very successful. And I was approached by several of law enforcement officers who were tickle pink or tickle blue, as you prefer to say, that the idea of doing another tree would make them feel so good to realize that the people of their community cared about them. And I couldn't say no. Our city manager has already given me permission to use one of the trees in Lions Park to do that. It means that we are going to have to make, hand-make, 8,465 yellow ribbons. It's not going to be easy, but it's something we achieved before, and it is something we can achieve again. This time, they will be blue and black ribbons. It's not going to be easy. It'll take a lot of time. At 8,465 ribbons, if we get $1 per ribbon donation, we could buy probably four and a quarter shields. What if we could get $5 per ribbon? Can you imagine what we could do? And with your help, and the city's help, and the Teller County people's help, I am determined to do that. I hope that you will understand where I'm coming from. And doing $5 a ribbon is something that we're allowed to dream about and hopefully achieve. Blue lives matter. And for every blue life that is extinguished in our community, that makes your life, mine, and our children's life way more vulnerable. Something seriously to think about. Every time we lose an officer, we lose that officer's protection. I thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you. I hope that I will have your support. And I thank you all for what you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deloreta.
Thank you very much.
[applause]
Who's thinking? Who?
She has my support.
Thank you, sir.
Well, you got my support, too. I always support you, Deloreta.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have anybody else signed up. Anybody else like to speak tonight on items not on the agenda? Okay, if not, we have no unfinished business. We'll move on to ordinances on initial posting, and Mike Farina.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start off by thanking Erin for her advice and being able to work with her the past two years that I've been here. It's been a very great and professional relationship. I know I could always call her and seek advice, and she was always there to provide it, very good advice. So, we'll miss you, and sorry to see you leaving, but thank you. So, tonight on initial posting is supplemental appropriation the first of the year to add $80,000 in expenditure to the general fund budget, which, as you know, we have this ongoing police investigation, and there's going to be additional costs that were unexpected and unanticipated as we put together our 2019 budget. So, to start off with, we're requesting $80,000 to be added to the budget for this police investigation. The funds are coming from, we did not expect an increase in our dispatcher stipend that we received from E-911. We budgeted $160,000 in revenue, found out right around the time the budget was being passed or already passed, it was going to be $200,000. So, there's where $40,000 is coming from. And just looking at early projections for the 2018 year-end revenues, it's looking like we'll be at least $40,000 ahead of what we projected. So, that's where the other 40 is coming from to fund this $80,000 request. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Questions, Counsel? Everyone knows what we're referring to here. And we're on initial posting, so if there's no questions, we'll just call for a motion to approve ordinance 1341.
I'll move to approve ordinance 1341 and set the public hearing for March 7.
Second. On initial posting.
On initial posting.
Thank you.
And setting the public hearing for March 7. Thank you, Suzanne.
And Paul, Paul Second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, you said yes.
She did. Move on to ordinance number 1342.
I'll take that one, sir.
Great.
With Counsel's permission, I would also like to discuss item 10C, as they're both related. And actually, 10C comes before 8B, but I'd like to discuss them together, and then I'd ask for a separate motion for each. So, both of these, I'm excited to bring to you today or tonight, because these are water shares in Twin Lakes Reservoir, the purchase of those water shares. As Counsel is aware, we're always on the lookout for these shares, and they don't come available very often. The last time we purchased shares was 2.3 shares in 2015. And then, before that, it was all the way back to 1997. We did purchase some, or we closed on some shares in 2015, but that was a 12-year payment schedule with what we called the Bauer Brothers. And those were shares in Lake Henry. So, we were paying on those as we go, as we moved through, and when we closed on those, we acquired those. But, in regards to that, 2012 was the last purchase of the 2.3. And in front of you tonight is purchase of 5.3 Twin Lakes shares. These are, this is the water that makes it legal for us to use our local sources. These are the only shares we look for. We don't look for shares in Lake Henry and Lake Meredith anymore. The Twin Lakes shares are the premier shares. These are at market value in front of you, and I do apologize for how quick it's been in front of you, but simply as of yesterday, there was another share added to this. So, it was 4.3. And then, as of yesterday, we were able to acquire, or hopefully to acquire, on your blessing, the last share for that 5.3. The reason there is a resolution, resolution 842 in front of you, is because that is the approval of the contract to purchase. And then, the ordinance is, per our charter, for real property, we have to have this approved through ordinance. So, that's why the two separate avenues for this. I can answer any questions you guys have?
So, one is real property, one's personal property?
Correct. Water shares are both, if you will.
Who's selling water shares and why?
So, in the back, there's a list of six shareholders. These six shareholders are either farmers or people who have inherited these shares. And one of the shareholders is the gentleman we purchased the 2.3 shares from in 2015. There are six shareholders. Each shareholder has either one share or .3 shares. And Erin can go into depth on the question about real and personal property.
What the resolution does is it authorizes you to enter into the contract for purchase. And that then starts the clock ticking on the due diligence that the city will conduct on these water shares. And if the city finds that the water shares meet with the approval of the water attorney and are what they are held out to be, then you would adopt the ordinance which allows you to close on the purchase.
And I would just like to add that the contracts were prepared by the water attorney, and upon your approval, we will execute those.
So, there's some urgency to this in previous conversations I've had with you that is why we're
Correct.
proceeding quickly.
Yeah. We like to try to jump on these when we can, because there is very few shares left. Most of the shares that are left are onesie twosies, if you will. The people who hold most of the shares are Colorado Springs, Aurora, Pueblo, Pueblo West, big, larger municipalities.
Yes, sir. Do we risk not being able to purchase these shares if we don't do it quickly? In other words, can someone come in and outbid us?
Absolutely. So, these shares were also in the paper, down in Ordway. So, they were actively marketing those shares as well.
Is there a process that we could expedite water share purchase via virtual vote in the future?
Let me if I can, because I think this has been a long, a long discussion over the last two weeks, and we finally came to kind of a discussion on the complications. So, the charter requires the ordinance process, which is very, it takes a lot of time. And so, really, the resolution allows us to secure the contract, to quickly secure it with, and then the ordinance process. Let's go through the due diligence and make sure that the water rights are everything that they say that there are. The only way to really make a significant change in this process is to do a charter change. And so, that would be something, I will tell you, is water rights become more and more rare and difficult to acquire. It might be a good measure, and it'll be something we'd want to discuss, a possible charter change to make at least water rights, the acquisition of water rights, convenience of water rights easier or more expedited in the future.
And ordinance requires a public hearing. Could that not be done at a special meeting in between meetings, in between regularly scheduled council meetings? A way to speed up the process?
Speed up the process.
Erin's thinking.
Yeah.
I can see it on her face.
Yeah. I mean, as long as you can still meet the publication requirements, I think it's possible, especially in those events where you have like a fifth Thursday. But, yeah, I think that there would be a possibility. I think the critical thing is being able to move quickly on a resolution to authorize entering into the contract. Because most of those contracts are going to have a 30-day due diligence period. Some of them may not, but I think usually it's fairly standard in the industry to have a 30-day due diligence period. So, you know, this is, I think what you're doing here works pretty well, because you're putting your first three ordinance on at the same time for resolution.
Also your resolution.
And I think the only problem would be if you hit one of those periods where you've got three weeks before your next meeting.
And maybe we could have a special meeting, like Carol suggested, to give the city manager authority through the resolution to move forward with the due diligence.
Exactly.
And we could start the process and then catch up with the ordinance and such.
Yes, and thank you. That was, that's what Carol was asking, and you're right.
And because these shares come up so seldomly, I would hesitate to support a charter change when we could find other ways to expedite the process.
Because as you point out, it's the resolution that you might need to, that initiates the process, and that you could hold your special meeting to adopt.
Let's get on with it, Dad. And that gives staff the authority also to move forward with the negotiation, everything with those sellers, which I think is what they're looking for, a commitment. with those sellers, which I think is what they're looking for, a commitment. And that gives that commitment. Am I correct in that?
It does. So, go ahead, Erin.
Subject to...
Counsel approval.
The counsel approval.
By ordinance.
By ordinance.
I've been in this position in a different organization before, where we didn't have charter restrictions on the purchase, the lengthy ordinance process to purchase, and we are going after the same shares. And so they're a little more nimble and flexible in getting these, so that's, the resolution would be very helpful, and that's why we deliberated on this, because we didn't want to have the opportunity to secure the contract upfront. But I'll tell you, even with that, without a charter change, we are still, we still have, we're not as nimble as some of these other organizations. I was authorized to purchase those Twin Lakes up to $1.5 million because they were so valuable through a resolution when I was at my last organization. So it is, it is something that's very important to be flexible and nimble to acquire.
So maybe that should be on our list of things to do, is to address that, just for the water shares purchases, and see if we can't make the process more user-friendly, if you will.
And there are a variety of things you could do. You could have, if you're going to do a charter change anyway, you could consider, as the city manager has mentioned, that you pull water rights purchases out of that 15.3 that requires an ordinance for real property purchase. You know, or maybe you could, as a homeless city, you certainly could, if you decided, you could have a single reading ordinance and hold your public hearing with respect to purchase of water rights instead of having to have two readings.
Because it's just going to become more competitive.
Yeah. The question will be, you know, do you want to maintain that public hearing piece of the procedure?
Yeah, I think the one thing I would say is that water rights, we, in 20 years, 30 years, water rights have not, have never decreased in value. So if you get them now, you're, as long as you're getting them at market value, you're getting a good deal, they're always going to appreciate, so.
Very much so. May I suggest we move on, because I understand in Colorado, water is for fighting and whiskey is for drinking?
I would love to. Just to wrap that up, this is not in the 2019 budget. We don't budget for these large purchases. So this will come out of the fund balance of the Water Enterprise Fund. The Water Enterprise Fund is just a little over $3 million at this point in time, so it can withstand this purchase. With that said, I recommend approval of resolution 842 and approval on initial posting, ordinance 1342.
Suzanne, which one do you want to take first?
I think we should do the resolution first, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 842? Motion to approve resolution 842, city purchase of water shares. Second. Thank you. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Great. On initial posting, we need a motion to consider ordinance number 1342.
So moved.
There you go. I'll second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Go make your call. Good to go.
You can use my phone.
Okay, no public hearings tonight. We move on to new business, and approving resolution 841, Erin.
So after some consultation with Erin and finance department, and discussions about a lack of policy in place really to formalize or codify the policy in place that give me the authority to sign contracts $50,000 or less, we developed this resolution, actually this resolution is a model resolution that Erin presented to us, that would give the city manager, define the city manager's authority to approve contracts up to $50,000.
What's the threshold now?
Right now, it's, it's, yeah, it's really nebulous, I'll be honest with you. It's inside, well, it's written in an internal policy, but it, I'll bring it up, actually. It was in the, it should have been in the packet. It's not codified. I just leave it at that, right? It's been kind of...
Nebulous.
Yeah. Nebulous. So the thought would be, this would define where the city manager, what I could approve, and the city manager in the future, what he could approve or she could approve in terms of contracts. So it's setting that bar, and then anything else that would be above that would have to come to city council for approval, so.
Protect city council. I love the idea. Questions, counsel? Val? So there's two, there's two characterizations. One is a city council-approved contract, and another is a city manager-approved contract. So city manager-approved contacts, contracts, talk about change orders that aren't approved by the city council.
Does not exceed $50,000.
Yeah. And how did we come up with that number, just for fun?
Well, it wasn't, yeah, I can have Mike come up, but Mike did an analysis of a number of 15 different cities in the state of Colorado, and I'll let you...
Man, counsel, I sent out a request to finance officers at CML and just surveyed them as to what their thresholds were, and it came back anywhere between $25,000 and $100,000. So we settled on $50,000. I believe in our policy that Mr. Tangman was referring to, it was $50,000 as well. That's kind of a practice that we've been using, however, never codified. Didn't want to get it codified, so we left it at the 50. It's in line with what a lot of other cities are doing, and we just felt it was prudent to have it codified through council or a resolution.
Well, and it probably facilitates a lot of the daily operations contracts, for instance, the HVAC systems, the first aid refreshment stations, those things like that, that are daily operations that would be contracted anyway and really wouldn't need the attention to council. Those larger construction contracts, things like that, it makes sense, so.
You good with the $50,000?
Absolutely.
But will still be, get notification at the next council meeting regardless of which one it is?
For contracts. You know, it also covers purchases as well, so it's not necessarily just contracts. Purchases that exceed $50,000 would come to council, for example, purchase of three cars that exceed $50,000, that would come to council for consideration.
Even if they're in the budget?
Even if, even if they're in the budget. Now, these contracts that, even if they are able to be approved by the city manager, because they're under $50,000, those would also have to be in the budget. They would have to be budgeted funds, so.
Go ahead, Carol.
We had a, I don't recall if it was a resolution or just a general consensus with the council for our good neighbor policy. Would this also fall under that?
That's a, that's a really good question. I don't think that it's explicitly identified in there, and so I think that it should, it should be, so there just aren't any questions in the future. Because that good neighbor policy, money isn't really a contract and it's not really a purchase. It's really sort of a settlement, if you will.
And that's always been a council decision?
Well, it was not previously, and we asked, and I do not recall if it was by resolution or just consensus, on anything over $5,000 had to be approved by the council. And these are payments that would be made where, generally speaking, the city had no liability, but because we, literally a good neighbor policy, that the city may pay out for certain damages. And it was a $5,000 limit.
And I, my recollection, not looking at that, and that's why I think it's great you, I just thought of that too, I believe the resolution says that's council's authority, and there was no agreement among council to delegate that to the city manager at the time. So that could certainly be considered here, and it'd be a fairly simple amendment to what's in front of you.
Counsel? Other than amending?
And that amendment would read, with the exception of, whatever we called that?
I think you just say, you refer to payments under the good neighbor policy pursuant to resolution, whatever that resolution is.
What she said.
So would you recommend that we take this to the next meeting with the modified language you talked about actually put in place? Do it right now. She just said it. She made a motion. Well, where, I mean, it's, where are we going to put it? We can put it, we could restate it. Wouldn't make any difference if we wait until the next meeting. We can restate it right now. It's what we have, plus the good neighbor policy addendum.
We can make it right here on the...
I'm fine with that. I was just looking for the detail. Put it in here.
Write it on there.
So if you'll just refresh us one more time, I think Carol said, whatever you said, if you will, if you will rephrase that for us, and we'll go from there. Yeah? You want to take a minute?
Yeah. I, yeah, I think what I would do is I would add a paragraph, a new paragraph three inserted in front of the three that's there, and I would add that the city manager is authorized to make payments up to the amount specified under the good neighbor policy described in resolution number. And that way, if you ever changed in that resolution what your good neighbor threshold is, this automatically wraps it in. Did that, did that work?
And I can repeat that for whoever, if council member Harvey, you, want me to repeat that for your motion?
Yes.
Okay. So just so for clarification purposes, what I understand, the amendment will be added to paragraph three.
A new paragraph three.
A new paragraph three. And it will give, it will say, the city manager is authorized to make payments up to the amount specified under the good neighbor policy described in resolution, and I will find that number for you.
Thank you.
And then of course, paragraph three with agency relationship changes to four and so on, do the rest of the resolution.
So then my motion is to approve resolution number 841 as amended.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Hillary seems to be getting better every minute.
It's fun, isn't it?
It's great. Okay, last item on new business then, will be the presentation of the Community Investment Review Committee report and recommendation, and I see our pal right here in the second row. Welcome, Darwin.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, staff. Darwin McElrodt, 410 Craig Court here in Woodland Park. Losing my voice before I start. It's a good thing I don't have a long presentation or anything here. You already have the proposal or the recommendation of staff and the committee in front of you, but a quick summary, which is outlined in that report. The committee reviewed each of the applications. We had 15 this year, and interestingly, we are recommending all 15 receive something. The budget for the, for the year was $20,000. The requests from the 15 applicants totaled $38,000. Typical. We are recommending approval of $16,200 for those 15 applicants, leaving $3,800 for future possibilities throughout the course of the year. We're also recommending, you'll notice, two of the applicants be considered by council I think you have in front of you a description of what that would entail, based on the December approval of our revised directions for Community Investment Committee, along with some additional, just additional information. Those two applicants are the Cruze Above the Clouds and Youth Past Symphony Guild. The committee believes that those two organizations and events really are the epitome of what we would call a signature event for the city. Those two things are well-known throughout the area, certainly in the city, throughout Teller County and even a much broader area. They both bring revenues to the city and a return on investment beyond what we would normally expect for events of that nature. When you have an event such as the Cruze Above the Clouds, we all, we all know what they do with the help that the city gives them, and it's not just in the form of the community investment grants that we've given them every year for, well, as long as I've been associated with it. There are in-kind contributions to that effort, and we'd like to see that continue, but we'd also like to say that is certainly up to council. Same goes for Symphony Above the Clouds. I think arguably 5,000 to 10,000 people attend that on an annual basis, weather permitting, which is about the size of the city itself. So we know it's bringing in people from outside the city to the event, and they shop, dine, and lodge here, and sales tax revenues then flow to the city. So we think there's a monetary return. Symphony Above the Clouds has also provided a considerable amount of in-kind services from the city, from, from police officers directing traffic to fireworks, to a lot, just a lot of things. Had we left them, had we not recommended signature status for those two, what you see on the sheet, on the spreadsheet, is what the Community Investment Committee would have recommended for those organizations. It really doesn't dictate what council will do if you approve the signature status. You can do whatever you want to do. What it, what it does, though, is move that amount of funding out of what normally would be considered community investment funds into their own general ledger line item accounts, and that would go forward in that manner, if that makes sense to you.
Would it ever have to be approved again, then, if it's signature status?
I think it gets unapproved at some point if, if various, if the criteria on which we judge them for signature status, both CIC and city council, changes, we would review it again. But as long as that criteria doesn't change, I see no reason to keep reviewing it.
So as long as they apply and apply for the same amount, we don't have to review it? But if they, if they apply for a larger amount?
Or if, or if they decide that, oh, I don't know how to, we're going to hold, we're going to hold car show in Manitou instead of Woodland Park.
So you're going to review it every year?
Yeah, we're going to look at that sort of thing, and we're going to let council know that we think maybe something changed.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. The intent was that they don't reapply every year, but we keep an eye on them, basically, for continuing to do what they're doing.
Exactly. And so we might come to you and recommend, hey, wait a minute, we just learned something about one of these organizations, and we think we ought to reconsider.
I have a question.
Please.
Sir? The in-kind amount and the cash amount, the cash amount is what they're asking for or receiving, the in-kind amount is the value added through services and stuff like that?
Correct. Well, the cash amount is not necessarily the amount that they ask for. It's the amount we would have recommended.
I understand that. That's what they're receiving.
Exactly.
And the in-kind is the amount of services?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. I'm happy to answer.
I kind of, I think I anticipated that if the event were to be described and meet the definition of a signature event, that, that would...
the definition of a signature event, that, that would not necessarily be part of the CIF or CIC process any longer, it would become an annual appropriation issue for the city council as a line item in our annual budget analysis.
That is correct.
And so really, and then if, if something changed with that event that caused it to maybe not meet that definition again, then the city would, it would drop back into the CIC's evaluation process and out of the annual budget appropriation consideration.
You are 100% correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure I understood.
No, that is, that's a very good summary of, and I appreciate that.
Yep, it was. Carol?
Well, I'm looking at the Symphony Guild and knowing that it's a signature event that you're talking about is the 5th of July, and the guild asked for 2,500, you're recommending from the CIC or the CIF 1,500, but you've identified a need for 5,000 in-kind services. Do we know how much we've provided in-kind services previously? Is it, it's overtime for, has it been 5,000?
Well, in addition to the officers, we also provide city staff that helps with setup. We also provide the fireworks.
And the portlets.
Yeah, the fireworks are the largest expense of the event that we, the city provides for. A council member, or Mayor Protem, excuse me, Carr, has asked and requested that the city start keeping track of those in-kind allocations.
And there's no cost associated with the use of the middle school?
No.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. If I may help a little bit here, the estimated in-kind is really a guesstimate, and that's why we laid out this process to, it's, so the, the in-kind is a guesstimate for these various things. We actually have three entities here that we think have in-kind things going on.
But ultimately, it's, it's still on the merit of the organization's application, how much you've decided out of that 20,000 to allocate for each of these organizations.
That's correct. And we did go through the same process of the question you just asked about. During the committee, we tried to figure out exactly what, well, I wouldn't use the term exactly, we tried to figure out what in-kind might be. And we knew about the fireworks, for example, we knew about the portlets and the police officers and so on and so forth, and we tried to tabulate that, and that's, that's the way we came up with the number. But we don't know, and that's, that's really what we'd like, we, we think they're signature events, we think they're really important for the city, but we also think that it's important to know how much they really do cost, and how much the city really does contribute to their success.
Mr. Mayor, I, just so that, that I'm completely clear, I just need to bring out that I am a active board member on the Ute Pass Symphony Guild. I am not one that, the one that does the grant requests any longer, so I did not submit this application, and that I just need to know how the council feels about that in being, being involved in this decision. So, and I will speak for Ms. Labar as well, because her voice isn't working this evening. Ms. Labar is also a new member of the Ute Pass Symphony Guild Board of Directors as well.
I've got absolutely no qualms. All you're doing is something great for the communities. Sorry.
That's all right, I just need to make that clear.
No, I appreciate it.
I don't want that to be...
I appreciate it. And Darwin, you know what, I know how difficult these decisions are, we couldn't make some decisions with seven or eight of us, I think maybe it's easier with two, three, or four, but thanks to you and your committee, I know Val's highly active in that committee, and, you know, great job. Suzanne, I'm not sure who else on that committee, anybody else here today is on that committee?
It's on your paper right there.
Oh, there it is. Darwin, Marty's not here, and Sue's not here, and neither is Bruce. But appreciate your hard work in this, I know it's, it's not, it's not an easy task at all, but I think we're, we're getting closer to where we want to be. That said, council, if there's no more questions, I call for a motion to approve.
My excuse, by the way.
No, there's no excuse for you, but thank you for asking.
I guess I'll put the motion forward to approve the funding request by Community Investment Review Committee and their recommendations, including the two signature events and the characterization of the column that says cash, or the distributions at the earliest possible.
Should that be for the 2019 funding?
Yeah.
The way it's read, it says 2018. Great. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Swinier?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we're gonna move on to Mayor's report, I just have a couple things. Gosh, I don't know how to do this, I think I wanna, I wanna set the lead for our ribbons at Lyons Park, and tell Doloretta that the Levy family will, will buy 200 ribbons at $5. And hopefully, council and others in the community will take that lead and continue in that manner. I know most of the guys right now at least have one on duty, because they share them, but we need 10 more, that's correct?
Good.
Got 22 for all officers. Okay, that said, I just have one announcement tonight, and that's relative to the Teller County Cares Volunteer Service. We're gonna have Teller County Cares award that, awards that we do every year, the, the event this year, I believe, is April 10th at the Cultural Center, and we try to honor, we, you all, honor people in the community that give back and that volunteer, and that have volunteered sometimes for as, as many as 20, 30 years to their, their different agency, or, or their, their different passion, whatever it may be. What we sometimes don't do as well as we should, we all know who those people are, when I make this announcement, you're all thinking of people right now that contribute greatly to our community. Please, please, please. You can find this application online. Karen, help me out.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
So, the city...
Sorry, I know you told me, don't call you to do this, but I want to make sure we get it right.
So, we can, we can put the application online, on the front page of our website with a link. There are various communities and organizations that are involved with this, and it's the 16th year, so, and the county is actually taking the lead in organizing that event this year.
Karen, is the deadline not, deadline not this weekend?
March 1st.
The deadline is March 1st.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have. Council, Val?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I hope I speak for the rest of the Carr family, since she's watching on a stream, but likewise, the Carr family would like to pitch in for the Levy family with five, $205 ribbons towards Doloretta's Shield 616, and I'm happy that we're working to better our first responders and public safety officers, both in, in the city and the county, with, with efforts like this. Keep Woodland Park beautiful as meeting and making some plans for summer and some various activities which are not yet public information. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
What did we commit to?
We committed to...
Thousand bucks.
$1,000.
Okay, thanks.
Kelly?
If I may, I would like to share something that came to the staff and to the city council from Patricia Stinner. It's a positive letter. She just wants to say, she was talking about this, I'm not gonna read it in total, but she was talking about the supplemental appropriations that we approved this evening, one being the $80,000 to cover unexpected expenses associated with the investigation the police department's conducting, in a fine fashion, if I may say so myself. And also the appropriation to be able to jump on the water shares that came available. Both requests were substantial and unexpected. She says, yet both have funding available because of the mindful efforts of the city administration with careful oversight of the seated city council. Three years ago, it wasn't quite that way, I'm paraphrasing. This year, the city is able to cover these without extended debate or doubts. Thank you, city administration and city council, for this new peace of mind. Sincerely, Patricia Stinner. So I thought every, that the community would like to hear...
Thank you.
...that appreciation for stewardship of the city's money. And Kelly, being a family of one, but I do have a business in town, as most of you know, and I don't know what that looks like yet, but I'm gonna do something, too, as I said to Ms. Doloretta when she left, so.
Thank you.
We'll be supporting that effort as a real, real estate office in Woodland Park.
Carol?
No announcements, but I will have to confer with Mr. Harvey, who does not watch the council meetings, but we both will volunteer to tie ribbons for the tree, for sure.
Hillary? Sorry.
Hillary says she'll do the same thing.
$6,000 from Hillary. That's what you get when you come with no voice. Paul?
I too, I always support Doloretta's with my time and talents, and she always appreciates it, and I always appreciate helping. So with that said, it really determines what people do at her silent auctions and to get one of my fine pieces of jewelry. Anyhow, I did attend teen court this past session, and that was for the first time. I thought it was great to see the kids and how they sat up here, and how they asked questions of the first offenders, there were three cases, and how they came to their judgment with the guidance of the judge, and with the Woodland Park Police Advocate leading the court, and the parents' participation. I recommend that everybody on this council should sit in teen court and see this for themselves. It is a, a good program, well worth it. And I appreciate the city manager and Val Carr now being part of representation to Main Street for the city, Darren and Val being on the, on the chair. It's a great addition to Main Street, and I believe it is a right step in cooperation with, between city volunteer organizations, and I understand that Deb will be participating too, and look forward to that. And I always appreciate all the volunteers of Main Street and being able to be their liaison. I look forward to a very cooperative year and lots of forward progress. And I thank everybody who has come tonight, all who participate at home and watching. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and happy with that.
Thank you, sir. Okay, last chance.
Yes, thank you. I would love to take one last chance to say thank you for the thoughtful reception, thank you for all the kind words, and thank you for the beautiful, beautiful pottery by the local artisans. I'm humbled and I'm just deeply, deeply appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Darren?
I'm gonna defer my, my comments to Ben on an update on the Ute Pass Cultural Center. So with the generous donation from the Habitat from Humanity, we are able to give the Cultural Center a excellent facelift.
Hey.
And what we're looking at for that is some reclaimed, what we refer to as beetle kill wood, that's gonna go on the side where the, kind of the white walls are, and this work is to begin next week, and then we've got some local talent that's also gonna help us with some barn doors to go over those windows, so we're gonna give it a really nice rustic, kind of modern feel inside there, and then still coming up with some options on the floor to make sure that we have the best acoustics, but right now, we're, we're leaning the most towards a luxury vinyl product, which has a 30-year warranty commercially, so we can get a, a really good use out of the money that we spend there, and it should just, it should just make it pop really nicely, so.
Thanks, Ben. That's gonna be a great, great improvement.
Thanks to Habitat for Humanity for playing.
And that's, that's, that's gonna help out immensely and reduce the, the cost of, and get, get a lot more done in there to really bring it up to a, a great standard. We're also in the process of advertising for the, the event center coordinator that will help run the, the Culture Center in the future, and so that, that'll be out for the next, I think, next 10 days or so. So, if you know anybody who wants to apply to that, that's, that's open right now. And that's, that's my comments.
Your comments. Okay. Well, thanks very much once again, Aaron, we're gonna miss you, thanks so much, and best of luck. Best of luck. Counsel, I need a motion to move into an executive session, which we'll do upstairs, and for anybody that's interested in waiting, we will come back and adjourn this meeting. Should be a short executive session, hopefully not more than about 30 minutes if needed.
Mayor, just for the audience's sake, we will come back and adjourn the public meeting just to close. We're not gonna be voting on anything this evening or making any decisions.
Thank you very much. Motion?
I'll move to go into an executive session.
Second. Suzanne?
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. This meeting's not...
Thank you, Karen.
I love you.
Thank you.